Who's the third person? Third. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the second of three public hearings on the county's 2025 budget. This evening, we'll be hearing from the Community College of Allegheny County in a court of common pleas, fifth judicial regarding their proposed budget for 2025. Public comment will be received by council before the invited guests make their presentation and answer council's questions. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Please be respectful as everyone else speaks and observe all time limitations. With that, Sarah, please name the public commentators. Welcome.
Thank you. Get your flu shot and vote, everyone. Thank you for moving the public comment to the start. Should be the standard for all public hearings. We must not have a millage increase. High taxes kill a community's potential. People cannot afford a 50% increase. We should be reassessing value and cutting the millage and the spending. For one, we can relieve the burden on council by separating major departments, Mr. Chair, with their own dedicated source of funding while still under your control. New ideas for a new Allegheny. Put it to a vote of the public. Real Democrats show vision without raising the main taxes. We were already losing this election. The executive made it worse. This is $160 million emergency and failure caused by you, not the executive. This is political corruption. What is leadership in public budgeting? What is the value of the public dollar? It's not your money, so you're reckless with ours. Simply put, we need to cut all non-critical spending, Mr. Chair. Each public dollar is precious. We deserve employees with a servant's heart. Every leader says their people are the best, so prove it. Every department, including y'all's, can be cut. Every contract reviewed. Why do we budget for 5,000 to 6,500 employees when we know that creates insane labor costs? Why do we give private sector compensation packages? Public service can't compete. Freeze hiring. Cut all administrative jobs. Limit salaries. Nobody in this county deserves more than 100K base. Cut hours. Eliminate overtime where possible. Cut benefits. No public servant is entitled to health care or a pension. No frills employment with reasonable compensation, Mr. Chair, will afford the choice to get Obamacare and/or make mutual fund investments. What is the role of county government? Why so many departments? The best of intention equals a race to the bottom. Why is DHS Human Services so large? Is the county really the social safety net provider? Why? Who is benefiting? How much? What are the metrics of success? People are still hurting in this county, Mr. Chair. The Board of Health and the county health department are an unmitigated disaster on air quality and general well-being. Why is the medical examiner so highly compensated? What role does county government even have in community college? Why does CCAC have so many campuses? I'd use the land if I was you. Why is the killing factory, I'm sorry, I mean county jail, still standing? Use that land. Why is the DA, the sheriff, the transit, housing authorities so costly? The austerity that's coming with cuts and the consequences are your fault. It is very simple. You need to identify massive cuts before we discuss new revenues. I'm trying to motivate savings on the spending side. On Wednesday, I will focus on new revenue and a new vision. Thank you kindly, Mr. Chair. May God bless this county and all who call her home.
Thank you, sir.
What did you go to, Florida? Okay, sorry. Wait, I need to find number one. Let me hope I don't miss this up. Hi, I'm Bernadette Mozy from Beachview. Tax the top five. Figure out who they are. I think we can all figure this out by now. UPMC, AGH, the universities. There, I did some research. You're looking at 46, okay, let's say 50%, money. They own over 47% in properties that they're not paying taxes on. Why? I'm sorry, Sarah, dear. I voted for you, but somehow, from the time you were called into office to now, you drank some orange Kool-Aid.
That's all I can say.
Here's something else. And this happened to me when I was in the hospital. I retired from UPMC Mercy. The new voting machines? I'm a poll worker. No reason why you can't take them into the hospital. I stood there, and they had three-piece suits, stand at the front of my bed, telling me that a primary was not an important vote. The nuns used to come down here and get judges to sign to get people to vote. Do you know how many votes are sitting in these hospitals this week alone? Can make or break an election, and they know it. I can't say anything else. Don't come after the people, please. Go after those top big fives. I don't know when that law was written, calling them nonprofits where they don't have to pay taxes. I don't know. Was it in the colonial times when they came up with the stupid Electoral College?
Thank you, Bernadette. I don't believe he's here.
I'm clear.
Dr. Bullock. Ready to come up? Want to bring somebody with you? Doctor, how are you? It's good to see you again.
It's good to see you. It's good to see everyone as well. Good evening. Joining me today, we have Connie Dyer. She's our new Vice President Chief Financial Officer, who joined the college this summer. And we are prepared to present the Community College of Allegheny County's budget overview. To start out, we always like to reiterate the important mission of the Community College of Allegheny County, to provide and prepare individuals to succeed in a complex, global society by providing affordable access to high-quality career and transfer education delivered in a diverse, caring, and innovative learning environment. The college's vision is essential to the community's partners for building a more equitable and inclusive region. Our innovative educational programs and caring support services create pathways to prosperity for all students. Our primary goals are to become a more supportive and caring, inclusive college, expand the college's role in addressing social and economic challenges, designing a more effective and equitable teaching and learning environment for all students, and improving the stewardship of the college's enterprise and resources. I've had the pleasure to serve as the college's president for almost 11 years. And my vision has always been to be recognized as an economic player in southwestern Pennsylvania, to expand out academic and career programs that align closely with the emerging and high-demand program areas, to provide exceptional learning opportunities and services to a diverse student body, and to make CCAC the first choice for students to commence their education journey, earn a credential, and go directly into the workforce or seamlessly transfer to a four-year college/university. It's also important to note the economic impact that the college has in our region. Our annual impact is $1.3 billion, or 15,705 jobs supported in the region. We also like to also state that for every dollar spent, students gain $4.70. Taxpayers gain $2.50. Society gains $9.50 in added income and social savings. Another important stat is that the average associate degree graduate from CCAC will see an increasing earning of $11,000 each year compared to someone with a high school diploma or equivalent working in Pennsylvania. So who are our students? Our students are made up of 54% women, 46% men, 53% enrolled in transfer, 47% enrolled in career programs. The majority of our students take day classes, 67% are part-time, 37% ethnic minority. We have 196 full-time faculty. 74% of CCA students select CCAC as their college of first choice. 45% of our students could not have continued their education without CCAC. 82% of our graduates live and work in the region. And 79% of our students graduate debt-free. We have put forth many efforts to expand the awareness of CCAC through our marketing and public relations. Our college brand and standards are standardized. Our school colors, our academic program brochures and videos, TV ads, radio ads, college interviews, publications, faculty highlights on the website, to increase the awareness of the college across the region and surrounding communities. I think it's important to show the trend that we've had in enrollment over the last several years, including through the pandemic. On page 10, you will see, starting with 2020, 2021 through 2023, 2024, you can see that in 2020, in the midst of the pandemic, we were at 21,000. That number declined in 21, 22. And then we began to stabilize in 22, 23, and started going up last year at 23, 24. When we look at the annualized FTE in 23, 24, you will see in the fall, we reached 90%. In the spring, we had 100%. And in the summer, we had 112%. So the numbers are beginning to trend in a very positive direction. The annualized FTE, we achieved 97% of our goal last year. This fall, we set an ambitious goal with a 7% increase. As of the date of this report, total headcount was 10,522 for the fall, representing a .37 increase. New students, 31, 41. Returning students, 7,381. We base our budget on FTE. And as of this date of October 11th, we were 99% of our FTE goals. So right on the edge of meeting the actual target for the fall. We also have worked diligently to continue to increase our graduation rate, to align our standards with our Middle States Commission on Higher Education, which provides the standards. And the current standard for last year was a minimum of 23%. We're 23.4%. That's just the benchmark. We are working diligently to increase that percentage about 2% annually over the next several years. When we look at the top graduation majors, you will see that the top majors include general studies, nursing, carpentry, heavy equipment, business management, electrical construction technology, liberal arts and sciences, business, ironworker apprenticeship, cybersecurity. Many of the high-demand emerging fields are studied. CCAC is aligned and responding to that need. When we compare our sales to the other 14 community colleges, you will see that our tuition and mandatory fees, on page 15, we are number 15 out of 15, one of the most affordable community colleges across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So what does this mean in regards to the budget? I'll turn it over to Vice President Dyer to review and summarize the budget contributions.
Thank you, Dr. Bullock. My 23, 24 summary of budget contributions include amounts for the college capital and the workforce development voting pledge. Our college operating budget is supported by student tuition and fees, state appropriations, county appropriations, and other miscellaneous revenue. In fiscal year 23, 24, we had a total budget of $111,801,000, 100%. That was 100% of our budget. You can see our tuition was 25.83%. Our fees accounted for 7.92%. Our state aid accounted for 34.22%. And our county aid was 28.54%. Our other revenue was 3.49. You can see, and also in 22, 23, how important the county aid is to keep CCAC running. In 22, 23, we had tuition credit revenue of 34,032. It was a 29.7% of our budget. The fees we collected were $10,467 at 9.14%. State aid was 38,174. We got it. That was 33.32% of our budget. In 22, 23, the county aid was 28,574 and consisted of 24.94% of our budget. And for a summary, you'll see a summary of 23, 24 Allegheny County funding for student-related expenses. These are amounts we had requested in 23, 24 budget. We requested $2.119 million. We have spent to date $1.7 million. And we expect to expend the rest during.
And I would like to add the added value that those resources provided to the college to increase student retention, success, and completion. The ability to have the supportive services to ensure that students have access to those services to complete their work successfully was a great benefit. So I extend my thanks and appreciation for the county council for awarding us those funds last year.
I agree. Thank you, Dr. Bullock. And all of these student-related expenses are based on our strategic initiatives and the goals of the college. So our 24, 25 college operating budget consists of $114,986,000. It represents a 7.2% increase from our 23, 24 budget. It represents 18,050 full-time equivalent students and state funding of $38.3 million. We got a 13.6% increase in county contribution from $31.1 million to $35.3 million. We expect our workforce development will generate $3.4 million this fiscal year. And our lab fees will generate $1.5 million. The lab fees cover lab and instructional supplies expenses. We've had no tuition increase, and it remains at $126 for in-county students. Flat in-county full-time tuition remains at $1,890 per semester. Out-of-county rate remains at $252 of credit. And out-of-state remains at $378 of credit. Our student services fees remain at $8.25 of credit. Our 24, 25 sources of revenue for operating and plant funds is a total of $124.7 million. $114,986 million of that is operating, and $9,714,000 is capital. You can see our largest funding source is our credit student-sponsored revenue at 31.7%. The state funding, or county funding, at 35.3 is 28.3%, which, again, you can see how important it is to CCAC, your funding, and we appreciate it. Our state funding is at 31.7 and 25.4%. And we have spent. Workforce development will bring in $3.4 million at 2.7%. And our 24, 25 operating and plant fund expenses also equal $124.7 million. And this is the uses of the operating and plant funds. Thank you. Our credit instruction, we expense, of course, is our most expensive, our largest expense, because it goes towards instruction, was, of course, is the most important part of what we do. So we have $41.4 million in credit instruction and expense, which represents 33.2% of our budget. And then our institutional support is $26.9 million, which represents 21.6% of our budget. And our next largest is plant operations, which is $18.2 million, which is 14.6% of our budget, and it funds to keep our buildings operating. 24, 25 college expenses, our revenue supports our college expenses, which includes salaries and benefits, summer school pay, sick leave, payouts, overtime overload, social security, workers' compensation, retirement contributions, life insurance, health care, employee tuition waivers. It also covers our operating costs, which is utilities, computer, data processing, software, postage, communications, lease expense, depreciation, professional service supplies, bad debt and interest expense. Our capital expenditures include debt principal payments, transfers to our plant fund, and deferred maintenance renovations. So our 24, 25 college operating budget, how do we spend that money? We spent 40, we planned to spend $46.463 million on instruction, $30.856 on institutional support, $5,771,000 on academic support, $13,035,000 on student services, $18,861,000 on physical plant, which gives us a total budget, operating budget, of $114,986,000. So in our 25 and 26 requests to the county, we have student-related expenses. We requested chill projects, which is a mental health services, testing centers at our campuses, diversity and equity inclusion, examining online, smart classroom upgrades, digital signage improvements, allied health mannequins, Microsoft A licensing and GrayLog for Office 365. That is a yearly expense. We started offering a $50 credit for early registration. We have student scholarships for aviation, reading and writing centers at our campuses, miscellaneous repairs and cost for classrooms and buildings, ITS repairs and maintenance, honor hub upgrades, art department and sim mannequin dolls, as well as a nursing lab at North. Our 24, 25 credit-sponsored revenue budget is sponsored versus non-sponsored students, which is in-state versus out-of-state students. Our in-county revenue for students that were in-county was $34,382,000, which represented 29.9% of our budget. Out-of-county was $5,930,000. It represented 4.43% of our operating budget. Out-of-state was $898,000 and represented 0.78% of our budget. So total student, credit student revenue was $40,373,000. It represented 35.11% of our $114,986 budget.
Starting on page 26, you will see a breakdown of some of our innovative workforce development programs that's offered in our non-credit as well as credit side of the house. We strive to provide pathways into the various emerging careers by way of summer camps, continuing education courses, specialized programs, and apprenticeships. When you look at the breakdown of our workforce development division in 23, 24, they served approximately 16,000 individuals, generating over $4 million in revenue. Some of the programs that highlights include our Certified Nursing Assistant Aid CNA, very strong partnership with the Kane facilities, our emergency medical services. We graduate a significant number of graduates annually in the EMT program. This past September, 21 students were admitted into the paramedic program. 27 other students graduated from the paramedic program this past September. The Advanced Emergency Medical Technician, also a non-credit program. We've had 18 students accepted and enrolled in the program. They started on October 1. 96 students registered for the EMT program. One hybrid EMT class started in this past, most recently. We also launched a Leadership Competency Academy. Discussions are in progress with Allegheny County Director of Human Resources to provide upskilling of county employees and leadership roles. This is an early discussion, but we are very excited to have the opportunity to partner with the county and provide leadership development for its employees. The Certified Nurses Aid Training Program is an ongoing important role that we play with the Kane Regional Center locations. While Kane has not sponsored any students in the CNA program in the 23, 24, they partner with CCAC as our clinical site locations for the program and hire our CNAs upon graduation to work in the various centers. The 5S continues to be a very popular program. 5S began, as you know, in 2009. We've had 498 county volunteer fires. I've received a 5S scholarship for at least one semester. 85 5S students were enrolled in 23, 24. 33 5S students were enrolled in 24, 25, which 11 of them are new students. 155 5S students have graduated. Students are enrolled in different programs of study with top programs, including nursing, fire, and emergency services. High-demand, non-credit programs are available for 5S. This includes EMT, advanced EMT, paramedics, and CDL. And the current enrollment in non-credit, high-demand programs, one student in the EMT programs, two students in CDL, and two students in the paramedic program, or part from the 5S. The CDL continues to be a very popular and successful program. It's one of the most affordable training programs in the area. We have ongoing full classes. It's offered at the Bors campus with annual competitive starting salaries for eight-week training program. This past spring, we also launched the CDL Class B with passenger endorsement training. It is also an additional, very competitive job to prepare persons to drive large buses, box trucks, dump trucks with small trailers. Very, very popular. Another popular one is the maternity doula program. This is the first of its kind in the region, created by professional maternity doulas and midwives. This comprehensive training qualifies students to support the entire reproductive journey from fertility through pregnancy, labor, childbirth, postpartum, breastfeeding, and bereavement. And the list goes on. We are offering that at the Homewood Brushton, as well as Braddock Hills Centers, and looking to expand it at the other locations. Capital?
You can see over the past 10 years, what the estimated amount of funding spent on capital projects in total for the last 10 years is $141,809,54.64. And we've spent it on HVAC chillers, new roofs, new buildings, upgrading ITS. There's been a lot of capital projects that we have worked on over the past 10 years.
We also explore supplemental funding sources. And over the last 10 years, the college has been successful in generating over $181, almost $182 million as national, federal, state grants to support instruction, equipment, staffing, programming, educational, and scholarships. The CCAC Educational Foundation is also a strategic partner in providing financial support to support the college's identified priorities. The foundation's endowment at the end of 23, 24 totaled $27,796,887. CCAC Educational Foundation C C A C Education Foundation raised four point three million in twenty-three, twenty-four. The foundation distributed six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in scholarship funds in twenty-three, twenty-four. And this fall, the Education Foundation distributed three hundred and seventy-five scholarship awards from the Allegheny County Dr. Charles J. Mortoni Endowment Scholarship to C C A C students from Allegheny County with financial, financial needs. So you can see that we are seeking all avenues, provide access to resources to support our students, and we are very appreciative of the work of the Education Foundation. And then the last is a breakdown to show the, a breakdown of students from your various districts and how our students are integral partners with your area. This concludes our presentation. We're open to answering any questions that you may have regarding C C A C's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Ms. Dyer. So we're going to go to my right starting tonight. I am going to go with Councilman Filioggi first.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair Palmasina. Thank you for your presentations today. It always is, education is something that's very important to my family and the district in which, that I represent. And we have a campus, C C A C North in McCandless, and we're very proud of that. I did have a couple of questions. One is, I'm really interested in the nursing programs that are offered at C C A C, and they seem to be growing in demand every year, as well as the workforce development issue, which is we need more nurses. And you had mentioned a partnership with the Canes. Has there been any thought given to partnerships with the Certified Nurses Aides with the Allegheny County Jail?
Yes, and we can definitely explore how to further that along with the CNA. I know there have been opportunities for our graduates to meet with representatives at the jail about the job opportunities. We do offer them to come to the job fairs to present the opportunities to students. I would also add that our recent number of graduates who took the NCLEX, we had a one-hundred percent pass rate, and so they are prepared and ready to go into the workforce upon completing and earning their NCLEX. I believe the most important component is making students aware of the opportunities and presenting the opportunities to the students as they prepare for exit, because their clinicals generally are the sites that know them and immediately offer them a job.
Right. So I would just make the recommendation, if there's anything that we in council can do to encourage that particular partnership, because I'm sure it's welcomed at the Canes, and, and the jail would also, I would, I'm, I have it on good authority that there would be people on council that would be helpful to you on that area. But I, I think that that needs to be looked at as another area, avenue of career development for your students and for the benefit of our county. So thank you very much for receiving that information. Well, okay, I wasn't prepared to go first, but okay, I've been asking questions. That's okay. No, 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 I'll make it quick, because I'm, I'll be done. Again, thank you. I ask this of the other presentations, and I'm asking it of everyone, there's no shock value. I would, I'm just inquiring as to, I'm assuming that both of you own a property in Allegheny County?
Yes, I own a home in Allison Park.
Excellent. And, well, maybe not. Depending on, right, right. But I'd be honored if you were. Also, do, when you were preparing the budget, your office was preparing the budget, did the county, the, did the administration ever indicate to you or ask you to look into austerity measures or cost-cutting measures when you were developing your budget for this year?
No, we, we developed the budget based on our projection and priorities.
Okay. And did they ever indicate to you before it came out in public that there was a forty-six percent increase in, in property taxes associated with this budget?
No, our budget was prepared in August and submitted to council.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was your three questions.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hallam, three questions, please.
Can I do like two quick ones?
No.
And then my three?
Please stick to three questions. It's a long night for everybody involved here.
Okay.
And I'm sure you're going to the game, too.
Okay. All right. My first question is, I noticed the graduation rate is increasing, and I love to see that , since now I'm a big C C A C fan. What, I know we've talked a lot over the years when we talked about the budget about increasing student supports, so I'm wondering if you could point to what student supports you think gave the most bang for your buck in returns to increasing the graduation rate?
Brainfuse is twenty-four seven tutorial service. Expanded access to testing services, testing centers on each of the campuses to accommodate students who need to take tests. Access to expanded technology. Let me turn to the list. We have increased online presence, so the ability to take tests utilizing Xemity was also a plus because it allowed for proctoring of online testing. A significant number of students come to us at remedial level, and we have been doing embedded tutoring. So the English Program Initiative, which has embedded tutors with adjuncts in the class to assist students when they finish the instruction to reinforce the learned skills in the class, has been a great plus. It increases student completion and persistence beyond the developmental class. Smart classroom upgrades, as more students integrate into technology, it was important for the college to also integrate the technology into the learning process, which allows students to expand their learning abilities. Access to scholarship dollars, because removal of financial challenges allows for more students to be able to persist and continue and complete their studies. Those are just a few.
Great. Thank you. My next question is, you know, we see this number that you're, is being proposed in this budget, and so I'm wondering if this number that you're getting, the, what is it, the thirty-five point three million dollars, if that is the same amount that you asked for in your initial request to council? And if not, thirty-five point three million, and if not, if you got more money, what would you prioritize?
You got it in there. Our twenty-twenty-five request?
Yeah. The thirty-five point three, is that the same amount that you originally requested when you submitted your proposed request? And if it's not, or even if it is, what would you do more, with more money?
It was not.
Okay.
It's definitely spending on our students trying to retention, increase graduation rates, increase advertising, so we could get more students. Definitely would be based on our goals and our strategic initiatives.
Okay. And then can you tell me, you know, we've been hearing a lot from folks saying, oh, cut the waste, don't raise taxes, which obviously we would love to do, so can you please point to me where in this proposed budget is wasteful that you think we could cut?
I would see that everything that's in our budget is in demand, because we are committed to maintaining high-quality education and ensuring that our students get a positive learning environment, and we strive to maintain that quality at all levels.
Thank you very much. And this is not a fourth question, simply a follow-up to the last one. Thank you. You said that the numbers weren't the same between what you asked for and what is actually proposed. Do you have the original ask, so I can see how much less you're getting than what you needed?
That was actually last year's, and I do, I did not propose that. I do not have that figured.
Okay. Yeah, but it's lower than what you asked and needed. Thank you very much. And thank you, guys, for everything you do. I'm really excited to hear all the new stuff.
We appreciate all you do for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come back around once we get through the whole board for any more questions.
I didn't have to do double questions.
No, I was just trying to hurry you up. Councilman DiMarco.
Thank you, Chairman Katina. Ms. Dyer, could you tell me what, I guess, what is the amount of revenue in student tuition that comes from the Pell Grants each year? Do you have any idea what that is, and what the percentage of that, that comprises of the student tuition?
I do not have that information with me.
Okay, that's fine.
Sam, if you remember, I'm sorry to bug you, but last time we had the budget hearings, there was a lot of questions that were asked that, you know, feel free to email us tomorrow or the next day, once you get the answers. So, you know, don't feel like you're under the gun. Whenever you get the answers, just feel free to email us. Thank you. Sorry, Sam.
No, not a problem. And listen, Dr. Bullock, I appreciate your and your organization's desire to provide the best educational experience we possibly can for the students of C C A C. I mean, I think that's what everyone's goal is here. But you're coming to us before, before us today, you're asking for a seven point two percent increase. And as some of the other members of council have alluded to, the administration has a proposed forty-six and a half percent increase, a tax increase they have on the table because they're looking for money. Have you given any thought to increasing the cost of tuition and fees by seven percent to the students? Because when I look at this, you guys are already the lowest-priced community college here in Pennsylvania, based upon the sheet you provided. A seven percent increase would only cost, would raise it eleven dollars and forty-five cents, which would be, make you at a hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents, which would still keep you at the lowest-priced per credit community college in the state. But based upon the proposed revenue here in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five cycle here, that would net you guys an additional two million twenty-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, you know, as a way to try to, to obtain the revenue you need to deliver the services to the students that you're looking to do, but that would allow you to do it in a way that it didn't all have to come from the taxpayers. I'd like you to, to look at that and try to respond.
We're not asking for a seven point two percent.
No, we're asking.
We're not asking for a seven percent increase. A seven percent increase was our enrollment projection. We requested a, about a two percent increase in revenue.
I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought you said, or I thought I heard.
It's a seven, it's a seven percent increase in our enrollment projection over last year. It's only a two percent increase in the budget allocation.
Okay, so that's even better. You know, still, a seven percent increase in tuition nets you, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, it was a seven point two percent increase from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay. So still, you're looking for four million dollars here, and that slight increase of eleven dollars and forty-five cents of credit, that's total tuition and fees, nets you two million dollars of that. You, any thought to looking to the students as well, the folks that benefit from the education here? And the reason why I brought up, you know, the Pell Grant, you know, as some other members of council have talked on multiple occasions about what percentage of the funding for community college is supposed to be provided by the county, by the state, and by the students. And really, the Pell Grants, last year, I think, when I asked questions, over fourteen million dollars of the annual tuition was provided through Pell Grants, which again is provided by the taxpayers. So I, I'd just like you to take a look at that, give that some consideration.
Absolutely.
As a potential way to get the revenue you need to deliver the education you're looking for, still provide exceptional value, you know, to our students, but again, be cognizant of the demands we're putting on our taxpayers. Thank you very much, Dr. Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Doctor.
Thank you, Sam. Councilman Bukowski.
You all right? Dr. Bullock, each year, I'm just so impressed at the work you and your team and, and your leadership at the community college. Just, each year, I've thought, wow, that was something, and then the next year, I'm, I'm even more impressed. A little bit of this process, I know, is posturing, so I, I'll, I'll let some of the comments go, but I, I do want to just congratulate you and your team for just the work that you've done. From my own personal perspective, I think that community college is one of those things that, that in Allegheny County is one degree of separation for everyone. I have so many friends that have attended community college. I myself have attended non-credit classes there, my, my wife has attended. Community college is just such a treasure for us here, and, and certainly all that you and your team have done, to expand on programs, to grow awareness of programs. I mean, just, I can't say enough. I honestly cannot say enough. And I am sympathetic to the idea of, you know, considering a tuition and fees increase, but I would ask you to please let that be one of the last choices. And it's just knowing, as I said, community college is one degree of separation for everyone here. The people that I know that had gone to community college, actually, a small, what may seem to us as a small increase in fees or tuition, actually might have been the determinant as to whether they actually were able to afford going. And I won't drag out my, my remarks, but kind of on this same line, there's a, there's a very tiny, almost, you're almost unable to find it in the numbers. It's twenty-five thousand dollars for bus passes. If there's a way to, to see that that program gets expanded even a little bit, because as I said, from my own life experience and people that I've known going to the school, you know, transportation is an issue for some people, and if that makes the difference between someone able to, you know, get the education that they want and a career in nursing, to, you know, support these programs and able to get there, you know, that is certainly something that I can say that I would be able to support on council. So again, thank you and your team for, for all of your work and for just an amazing presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. President Katina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Bullock. Thank you for everything you guys do. Some clarifying questions. On page thirteen, for the I P E D S graduation rate for the first-time, full-time students, fall twenty-twenty, you have it going up to twenty-three, four. Is that the most current number you have, or is there anything more current?
That's the current until after December. It comes a year later.
Okay, because I'd be curious to see what it went up to after that date, because obviously you're making great strides, but I was just curious if there was more current data. Let's see, page eighteen.
Let me explain, I see why you asked the question. Twenty-twenty represents three years, so that would be for graduation year twenty-twenty-three.
That's what I, okay, I didn't know when you got updated numbers. I was hoping.
So you add three years to every year, because it's a three-year graduation.
Three-year program.
Yes. So twenty-twenty is representing the graduates in twenty-twenty-three. Two thousand and nineteen are representing the graduates in twenty-twenty-two, and two thousand and eighteen are the graduates in twenty-twenty-one, because it's a three-year projection. So these are the most up-to-date, and the next graduate numbers will come out in December.
Okay. If you could get those to us when they become available, obviously. On page eighteen, you're, for the increase in county contributions will go from thirty-one point one million to thirty-five point three million. Hypothetically, let's assume we have to make a difficult decision and you don't get that. What happens at that point?
We will put all variables together, working closely with the Board of Trustees to review tuition, review fees, to see how we close the gap to meet the demands for what we need to support the education and workforce training programs.
Okay. Thank you. Final question. On page twenty-eight, the E M S, the Emergency Medical Services, and the Certified Nursing Assistant Aides. I hear constantly a lot about Fire Vest. Fire Vest, when I go into the communities, it's like, what's Fire Vest, and how do we promote it more, and how do we do a better job promoting some of these programs, trying to get the word out? Because I think we might have more people involved, or more people take us up on the offers, if we did a better job, I mean, getting the word out, and I don't know how to do that, I mean, other than word of mouth. I mean, do you guys have any ideas how we can possibly try to get better, I mean, try to get that out there more publicly?
Well, the Fire Vest falls under the Workforce Development Division, and we have Office of Public Safety Institute that promotes the Fire Vest program, working closely with the various E M T, fire, volunteer fire companies. Communication is distributed. Open houses are held for various individuals, and referrals are made to the Fire Vest for anyone who inquiries about it. We can continue to explore additional ways, and if there are areas that are not being penetrated, let me know, and I will communicate that back to the Workforce Development Division to make an intentional effort to expand in that area. that area.
Thank you. And this is just an observation, not so much a question. But obviously, I mean, you work closely with the Kane Regional Centers. It's no it's no surprise that we have a nursing shortage here among all of our facilities. Maybe we could look at possibly partnering specifically with the county to work a program that would basically provide full aid or what have you, and guaranteed employment if someone was going through the program, and guaranteed to sign on for X amount of years at our facilities. I'm just throwing that out there as something else to explore for. I mean, that's not going to solve all the problems right we have right now, but just potentially thinking out there among the future, what can we do differently?
That's a very good recommendation that I'll take back, because when students are able to get full tuition with the understanding, the commitment of number of years of service after graduation, it's attractive, because it removes the barrier of paying tuition and fees.
Okay. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
Thanks for stealing my question. Did you see my, thanks. Kaufman-Palmieri.
Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Bullock. We got to quit meeting like this. They're going to start talking about us. I had I had a lot of meetings with Dr. Bullock besides down here, ladies and gentlemen. Over, I'm on the Board of Trustees. Proud to be part of the whole organization over there, very proud to be part of it. I want to give you a little bit of a history lesson. When I came down, when I was appointed to CCAC's Board of Trustees, that's about 12 years ago now, we had four campuses, four different fiefdoms. We had four different logos. There was no one college. I was appalled when I come on and thought, what the hell? What are we doing? Well, Dr. Bullock's a change agent, has been since day one, thank God. And he's come in, and he started to really work hard with the Board of Trustees. And, Dr. Bullock, we, you know, we've supported you all the way down the line, and will continue to do so, because now we have a college that's really worth all the time, all the effort, all the money, and everything else that goes to it. It's a great place. And one of the things I want to mention, too, about tuition, the reason why we don't raise and haven't raised tuition, the type of students that we get from low-income families, people that really, really, they can barely stretch to get their kids in school now. I'm proud of the fact that we've been able to hold the line. 19, there's 19 community colleges, ladies and gentlemen, in Pennsylvania. We're the lowest, and we're the lowest on purpose because of the demands met, that we try to meet the demands of the lower-income families that really need the help. That's why the tuition's worth it, and that's why we didn't raise it. I also want to mention, also, we had the bus passes. That was an idea, I can't remember who came up, but somebody mentioned about the bus pass. You have no idea what just a bus pass means to our students to get to school. So anytime that Dr. Bullock brings these issues, and our faculty bring these issues to us, our meetings go on and on and on sometimes, guys, you ought to come to, ought to come to some of them. Dr. Bullock, how many times were there, three, two, three hours, four, sometimes even longer, just a few, two hours? He tries to, he tries to get us out of there, but by the time we get done with the questions and everything, it's three hours. But anyhow, I just want you to know, you do an excellent job. First class all the way around. The people, I'm so proud to be a part of the whole the whole operation. And all I could suggest is, please, keep up the good work. You're one of the best kept secrets in this whole darn county. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, John. Councilwoman.
I have no questions, but thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. We have a couple folks on the line here. Kaufman-Walton.
No question. I'm just in support of the work that they do on an ongoing basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Paul Messina. There have been a number of questions that pointed to the nursing program, and I recall presentations to us previously that talked about expansion of that program and being able to increase enrollment numbers. Can you just talk about that briefly, please, Dr. Bullock?
Nursing continues to be an in-demand, and we are offering day and evening nursing programs to accommodate that request. We are exploring alternative ways of expanding even more, and hopefully, in the coming year, we may have some new innovative ways to further advance the number of students who are admitted into the nursing program. Of course, to do that, it does require more nursing faculty and clinical, because the student faculty ratio, I believe, is 1 to 8 to 1 to 10, which will require additional staffing in order to accommodate that increased growth.
And thank you. And then the 2% increase that you referenced earlier, is there a particular budget line item that that really falls to? So is that mostly a personnel cost, or is it straight across the board?
It's it's straight across the board, and just represents an increase in expenses that, you know, normally we would have each year.
Okay, thank you. And certainly, very proud that Boyce Campus is in my district, so I see and recognize the value of all of the various programs in District 8, and thank you very much for that, and all of the good work that happens at Boyce Campus. No further questions, Chairman.
Thank you. Kaufman-Grisbeck.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Bullock and Ms. Dyer, for being here today in your presentation. I very much appreciate all the work you do at CCAC. To answer one of President Catina's questions earlier, I can tell you that local fire departments do a really great job of promoting their Fire Vest program. I can say my personal department in Buffalo Park, as well as all the departments in my district, always have information out on Fire Vest. So I can tell you that at least within the local municipalities, that particular program gets, you know, a pretty good rapport and put out to the residents there. Only one question for you all, same question that I've asked every department that's come through for us thus far, and kind of similar to other questions that are asked, but just to expand on it a little bit. If we don't raise mileage, we're looking at what would be about a 10% reduction in pretty much every department in Allegheny County. If we decrease the current funding that we're giving you by 10%, what would that mean for CCAC? And just to be clear, this is not an idea I'm proposing, just a thought experiment.
I mean, we would have to take a look at our labor workforce and see what programs we could reduce to come up with the difference from previous funding to whatever current funding you would give us.
Okay, I appreciate that. Could you expand at all on that? I mean, would it be, would you be able to keep all the same programs that you're offering? Do you anticipate you'd have to potentially cut programs, or really could speculate based on, you know, not having information in front of you?
We would have to go back and review it in detail to see areas that may have opportunity for some change, talking with the various departments to really understand what can and cannot be done. Unfortunately, I don't have those details with me to be more specific at this time.
Understood. Thank you very much. That's it for me.
Kaufman, any more questions?
No, thank you very much.
I'm sure you do. Go ahead.
Well, it, yeah, I have, well, a quick comment is, I'd like to remind folks, like, CCAC is not one of the budgets that can be cut. The Community College Act, as we have talked about year after year, requires Allegheny County to provide 1/3 operating to ensure that the students never have to pay for more than 1/3 of the operating budget. We are still, it looks like, a little bit short of even meeting that 1/3 threshold, so just wanted to point that out for the record. But my question is, we, I remember, where you guys are building that really cool building. It's built, I guess, the Center for Education Innovation and Training, and it's an amazing building, and it looks fantastic, and thank you guys for inviting us to participate in all the activities that have happened with it so far. I was just wondering, since that is like a new thing, and I'm sure will be more fully funded in this year's budget, what programs are there and how they're doing in that specific building?
Yes. The Center for Education Innovation and Training is an exceptional facility. It offers a brand-new culinary institute. Enrollment is double-digit increase. It added a baking and pastry lab, which is new, full-class. We also offer robotics and automation. The classes are full. We also do training and apprenticeship industrial maintenance technician, industrial mechanical technician. We also have cybersecurity. Enrollment is also strong. In fact, all of the programs in the new CEIT are up, because it provided a new opportunity, new programming, new credentialing to respond to emerging regions' need. It's been well-received. We've had over 2,000 guests to come through to tour the facility. We are partnering with the National Center for Certifications to provide specialized training with business and industry, to be able to do certifications that lead to credentialing that leads to work, so it's providing an avenue. Our K through 12 schools are coming through, because they see the value added for many of the students that may not be ready for the traditional four-year college, but would be better suited for workforce training initiatives or exploring other careers. It has opened the doors for the students to explore those different careers, and robotics and automation has been a hit, because when they see the robotics and can interact with the robotics and see the components of it, it has been a sale, and students have piqued an interest to want to participate.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and thank you, as always, for coming here and for your presentation. Also, shout out to all your CCAC staff, the support staff, the teachers. I have hit them up for various situations. They've helped me so much. They come here and they advocate to make sure that you guys have everything you need to advocate for them. So thank you very much, and shout out to all of them as well.
Thank you, Kaufman. Sam, just before you go, I just have a comment. You hear a lot of comments out there, and obviously, there's some issues here throughout the county, and I don't want you thinking that we're coming at you to cut your costs. I mean, the one thing we can't afford to cut, obviously, is the education to the folks that need it the most. So I don't want you running back saying, you know, where we're going to find these cuts at, you know? It's our job to find the money, and we will. Whether we need to move it around, that's a different story, but I don't believe education's one of them. So I wanted to say that to you real quick. And I also wanted to say that on the nursing, I mean, obviously, you know, nurses are in demand, and I know there's a program out there for some of these nurses to go out of state, and they sign these contracts, like, for three years, and they're bonded there by three years, and there's like a bonus they get. So maybe we can do that as far as with the education, as far as the tuition, maybe see what they actually get there and kind of all work together, and even with some of these nonprofits, maybe we can look into them to supplement some of these, some of this money, something like that. But I also wanted to say, every year you come here, you are so well-prepared, and it's always easy to follow, you know, your budget, and you make it easier, and you always answer all our questions. So I feel like John Palmieri always says, you're always well-prepared, and you've done a wonderful job down here at CCAC. So I wanted to just personally thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. Kaufman-Demarco.
Thank you, Chairman Paul Messina. And, you know, to echo a little bit of what the chairman said, Dr. Bullock, we do appreciate the work that you and the team at CCAC does, okay? We're just asking these questions because it is not just answer us, right? But you have the taxpayers of Allegheny County out there who are trying to understand, is they're staring down the barrel of an almost 50% tax increase, how this money's being spent. So you're coming before us today with this presentation, answering our questions. It's helping educate folks out there. It's exactly what it is that you are delivering, so that our constituents can make the judgment call on what's providing the value and where they think opportunities could be. And, you know, we don't say, as Chairman Paul Messina said, that we're going to send you back and ask you to cut X percentage or something out of your budget. We just want everyone that comes before us to be cognizant of the situation that we're in. You know, in a perfect world, we'd be able to take and give everyone whatever they wanted. Unfortunately, we don't live in that world. Our resources are finite, you know, and we only have X amount to be able to hand out. And we also recognize that in our, today's county budget, and in the proposed county budget, every dollar that we're spending or extending, there's a hand attached to that dollar. And that all the money that we spend, it does help people, right? It's just that, again, resources are finite, not just the resources that we have, but the resources the taxpayers have as well. So that's why we're asking these questions. That's why we appreciate your answering them, and thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you. No questions, Jack? Any more questions from the colleagues on the phone? Well, with that being said, Doctor and Ms. Dyer, thank you very much for a wonderful presentation, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. You're welcome. Before we bring the courts up, I believe we have one speaker that we missed that signed up, so if you want to call that name, we'll get them in, then we'll bring the courts up next.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The county's health department budget can be supplemented by increased permit fees paid by the operators, not the taxpayers. Increased permitting fees have been overwhelmingly supported by folks without a financial vested interest in U.S. Steel. U.S. Steel, their suppliers and subcontractors, have been the only voices in opposition. I can only imagine the lobbying pressures U.S. Steel and their supporters are urging you to bend to their will. Let's take a step back and consider the following facts. This year alone, U.S. Steel so far has spent $1.6 million in lobbying fees, and of that, nearly half a million, $420,000, was spent in the last quarter alone. It's national lobbying. The U.S. Steel board members are compensated with an average base salary of $175,000 annually, and currently, they have 13 board members. The company's net annual earnings in 2022 was $2.5 billion. So why is U.S. Steel fighting to defeat the proposed permitting fees that would help us? U.S. Steel has three Title V permit facilities in the county, so fees that would increase to $50,000, we're looking at a cost of about $150,000 for U.S. Steel. That represents less than what they pay as a base salary for each other board members. If you hear nothing else tonight, please hear this. It's not about the money for U.S. Steel. They don't want to relinquish the control that they currently have, where they negotiate their permits with the county. Consider the following. Increased permitting fees are necessary to make the air program self-sustaining, as recommended by the U.S. EPA. Increased fees means a stronger ACHD with more of the necessary tools to succeed to protect our health. Make no mistake, without these increased fees, our ACHD air program will be weakened. Our health will be further at risk. Please, do not be hoodwinked by the rhetoric. It's not about the money, but it is about our health. I'm asking you to please do the right thing, even if it's against the objections of U.S. Steel. It's time to put our health and our taxpayers first, and you have the power to do that and supplement their budget with the increased permit fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, we'll take a five-minute break, please. Yes, we'll take a five-minute break, please.
We're going to get started here. So next, we have the courts. We have the Honorable Susan Avashwitch, the LaSente. We have Joe Astori and Chris Connors from the courts. And welcome. It's good to see you all again. And feel free to start whenever you're ready to go.
Thank you. I thank all of you, members of counsel, for your time tonight and for your continued support of the court. We also have a posse back here in case you ask any very difficult questions. Oh, sorry. Okay. We've distributed a packet to you all. I promise you that I'm not going to go over it page by page, line by line. I know there's very important games that everybody wants to watch tonight. But I do want to go over it briefly just to give you an overview of our operations so that you can appreciate and understand our budgetary needs. The Fifth Judicial District encompasses the Court of Common Pleas and the Magisterial District Courts. The Court of Common Pleas has 43 judges. The Magisterial District Courts, there are 46 of them, spread all through Allegheny County. Plus, there is Pittsburgh Municipal Court. That court here is the bulk of most city cases. It's also open 24/7, holidays included, never closes for arraignments, warrants, PFAs, marriages. The court employs over 1,100 people. So let me go to the slide packet. And I'm going to start with the Civil Division. The Court of Common Pleas has four divisions, and each division has an administrative judge and a court administrator who are responsible for overseeing the operations of that particular division. The First Division is civil. Christine Ward is the administrative judge, and Diane Wainwright is the court administrator. Civil Division has nine judges. Civil Division hears any civil action that there might be, anything from personal injury, medical malpractice, breach of contract, eminent domain, tax assessment appeals, elections, liquor control board appeals. Nine full-time judges, as I said. During the past fiscal year, on the general docket, that court had 5,822 new case filings. The arbitration docket had 8,025 cases, new cases in the fiscal year. And arbitration is mandatory in Allegheny County. If you're seeking an amount of $50,000 or less, you have to go to arbitration. If you're not happy with the result, you appeal. You then have either a bench or a jury trial with a judge. Our Board of Viewers is in the Civil Division this year. They had 3,974 new tax assessment filings. And finally, landlord/tenant is also in Civil Division, and this year they had over, close to 1,900, new cases. The one thing I'd like to highlight, we're very proud of, is the fact that we instituted a housing court in the Civil Division. There is currently a help desk in the Department of Court Records, but we are in connection with the Department of Court Records, building a whole new little area for the help desk. It will be manned by, I believe, a supervisor, another employee at all times. They also are collaborating with DHS to provide resources for people who come in. It's a one-stop shop. So in the old days, you wanted to file landlord/tenant, you'd have to go to the Department of Court Records, go up to the seventh floor, find the motions clerk, come back down to the Department of Court Records, find your forms. Very, very confusing. So now you go to this help desk. They have every form you might possibly need. Everything is filed there. They answer any questions you have. They interface with the local Magisterial District Courts also, so they can update you on, you know, what was the date of the judgment, et cetera. They also have a helpline. They answer telephone calls. They also have a helpline email, and they try and respond to every telephone call and every email within 24 hours. One day of every week is devoted to landlord/tenant arbitration hearings. Every single case is offered mediation. We have three judges who handle those cases so that they have subject matter expertise and there's consistency. I'm going to skip a few slides. Next is the Criminal Division. Judge Beamer is our AJ, and Janice Radikovic, Dean, who happens to be here today, is our Criminal Division Court Administrator. In the Criminal Division, in the last fiscal year, we disposed of 10,262 cases. 26% of those cases are resolved on an expedited docket. Those cases are low-level, nonviolent crimes, and the docket is expedited so that you get an offer quickly, you know, plead or not plead, go to trial, but it's much faster than the general docket. Also, EDPs are done on an expedited docket. That stands for Early Disposition Program. Those are cases that are at the magistrate, and an offer is made to plead to something. You know, a magistrate can only accept summary pleas. They can't accept misdemeanor or felony pleas. So they plead, they complete that day in front of a Court of Common Pleas judge, and the case is resolved. 19% of our criminal cases are resolved via ARD, Accelerated Rehabilitation Disposition. ARD is for, in general, first-time, nonviolent offenses, and if you successfully complete your probation on ARD, your record is automatically expunged. So you don't have to file any papers, you don't have to do anything. Automatically, when you're done, your record's expunged. So that leaves 45% of the cases, which are resolved either via general trial or through a specialty court, also known as a problem-solving court. We have seven problem-solving courts in Allegheny County: Drug Court, DUI Court, Sex Offender Court, Mental Health Court, Veterans Court, Domestic Violence Court, and Prostitution Court. Specialty Courts are, I oversee Veterans Court. They really, really reduce the recidivism rates, okay? When you go into a specialty court, you are coming into court on a regular basis. You have constant review hearings. You have a whole team of people that are helping you, monitoring you, watching you, supporting you. So, for instance, in Veterans Court, you get help with drug and alcohol treatment, mental health treatment. If you need help with housing, we get you help with housing. If you need help with employment, we refer you to a veterans group who sit in our court and help you with employment. If you need help with transportation, we provide that. Sometimes, we provide Giant Eagle gift cards for people who really don't even have enough money to buy food. We also have the Duquesne Law Clinic participating with Veterans Court, and so they have students who come and represent veterans, but they also help them with other matters that they have. If they have a support complaint, if they're involved in a custody proceeding, if they don't know how to get their license back from PNDOT. So the Duquesne Law Clinic will help them with all of that. And the whole point is that you develop a relationship with the defendant, and the defendant develops relationships with the probation officer, with the other members of the team, with the court. You're monitoring them, you're applauding them when they do well. When they have a mishap, you're not sending them to jail. I mean, eventually, sometimes people, that is the ultimate remedy, but, you know, nobody expects perfection in a specialty court. You have a relapse, be honest about it, and let's get you back into treatment. So it's such a high level of supervision and monitoring and connection with these defendants that they really do turn themselves around, and the recidivism rate, as I said, really is very low. We also have two, what I would call diversion programs in our specialty courts. One is called APS. That is an after plea, pre-sentence offer. And in those cases, the defendant pleads to the charges, okay? Then they're put on pre-trial probation, and if they are successful, at the end, their charges can be just totally dismissed, null proso, so that they have no record, or they're greatly reduced, okay? We just started a new program called Pre-Plea, and it is the same concept as the APS, except under this Pre-Plea program, you don't plead. So the whole time that you're in court, you don't have this guilty plea on your record, okay? In the APS program, you've pled guilty, but you haven't been sentenced. Successfully complete, now we're going to either withdraw the charges or greatly reduce them. This other new thing that we just started is, you don't even plead. So you're on this probation. If you do well, the charges get dismissed and/or greatly reduced. So those are very, very successful, but they are very labor and time-intensive, especially for our probation department. Probation, moving along. Supervised, currently is supervising 13,104 people. Pre-trial Services is currently supervising 2,521 people, so that's a total number on probation's caseload is 15,625. So also, I might add that the best practices for probation has changed, you know, what is the best practice model. So just like I explained, that in a specialty court, you have really intensive supervision. It takes a lot of time. The probation officer develops a relationship with the defendant, and the new model of probation is similar to a specialty court. So instead of being like a referee, I'm the probation officer, and I'm just going to sit back and watch. If you screw up, I'm taking you to court, I'm reporting you to your judge, okay? The new model is more like a coach, right? I'm going to support you, I'm going to encourage you, I'm going to get involved with you, and I'm going to encourage you, okay, to do better. I'm not just sitting back and waiting for you to screw up. Again, very labor-intensive, very labor-intensive. And our probation officers work very, very hard. They're very dedicated people, and we need them all, is my point. Pre-trial Services, bail forfeiture cases in the past fiscal year, 1,936, bail modification cases, 3,880. I do want to call your attention to a program that we instituted. I'm not sure when it started, but we have what's called walk-in reinstatements. So if a person has an active warrant, typically, they would have to be processed at the Allegheny County Jail, eventually get in front of the motions judge, and they'd be in jail for about 72 hours. Now, we have a program. You walk in to pre-trial, you turn yourself in, and you go straight to the motions court and bypass jail. So that saves a lot of money. It saves a lot of heartache and anguish, you know, for people whose lives are disrupted going to jail for 72 hours. Electronic monitoring. We have an, electronic monitoring is really a jail diversion. So in terms of jail diversion, we have electronic monitoring. We have, we also divert people who are in jail if they're in need of drug and alcohol treatment and probation, and pre-trial interview them, get a place, get a bed for them, and we send them to rehab. So that's a diversion program. What's another diversion program? Alternative housing. When you are sent to alternative housing, you still, though, are under the custody of the warden, but you're out of the jail. The cost of being in, oh, I'm going to get it wrong, but I think a day in jail is like $180 a day, $177 maybe. The cost of alternative housing is like $80, okay? So it really is a big expense to the, savings to the taxpayers who send people to alternative housing, plus they can work, you know, which is another good thing. We have the DUI Hotel, another jail diversion program. So, you know, a lot of DUI offenses carry mandatory jail sentence, 48 hours, 72 hours, some are five days, and a bunch of requirements and things that you have to do. So instead of going to jail, you can go to the DUI Hotel. Yes, it's kind of like an alternative housing, but you get all your requirements done. It's cheaper than the jail. And then pre-trial, or sorry, electronic monitoring is also a jail diversion, and we have an average of, average people under electronic monitoring, 715, and that's on probation. And pre-trial electronic monitoring, we currently have 168 people. Last year at this time, we had 90 people. That's an 87% increase. So we're trying to keep people out of jail, is my point, for a multitude of reasons. Okay. Next is the Family Division, and Judge Hans Greco is the administrative judge. Tricia Sorg is the administrator of Adult Family, and Russ Carlino, who is here tonight, is the administrator of Juvenile. So Adult Family, what do they do? Child support cases. We have 91.44% of our cases have child support orders. In 2024, from January 1 to September 30 of '24, we collected 77,499, 499, 639, sorry, in child support, which is enormous. And Allegheny County is considered the number-one urban jurisdiction in America based on the federal performance criteria. We receive the maximum amount of federal incentive money available based on our performance, which is about $4 million. So they really do a stellar job in the Family Division in support. Support statistics, original filings in 2023, we had 4,290. They also do modifications, they do contempts. Adult Family handles divorce. As of 9/24, they had 1,754 divorce filings. Protection from abuse. From 10, in this past fiscal year, there were 5,741 temporary PFA petitions granted. And finally, Adult Family does custody, 1,529 custody complaints filed, also 532 modification of custody petitions, and 214 contempt or enforcement of custody order petitions. Next is Juvenile. Juvenile handles dependency and delinquency. Dependency is a child who does not have proper parental care or control, a child who's abandoned, a child who is abused or neglected, or habitually truant. Last fiscal year, there were 513 dependents, dependent, 513 children adjudicated dependent. There were also 504 emergency custody authorization requests. We have a judge on call around the clock, 24/7. If a child is, you know, removed from a home by the police, then they get CYF involved. CYF has to get the judge on the phone to approve removing the child and putting the child in foster care. The goal in a dependency case is always reunification, try and get that child back to his parents, his or her parents. In the meantime, if they have to be placed somewhere, the first goal is always kinship care, place them with a relative. There are times, however, when you cannot reunify, and a child has to be adopted. So we had 200 adoptions finalized last year. And, you know, the child is entitled to permanency, and you can't wait around for years and years and years for the parent to get it together at the expense of the child. Juvenile delinquency, that's obviously a minor who's committed what would be deemed to be a criminal act and who requires treatment, supervision, or rehabilitation. We have 1,047 minors active with juvenile probation, 314 adjudicated delinquent, and there's other stats in here, you know, for treatment, supervision, and rehabilitation. We have diversion in Juvenile. The first thing I would point to is consent decrees. A consent decree for a juvenile is like ARD for an adult. So you get on probation, fulfill the terms of your probation, your record is expunged. We also have what's called informal adjustments, and that happens before court intervention. So probation would get involved at the request of a parent, or police, or school, okay? And so you try and work and get programming and get help, whatever is needed, and you stay out of court. They're not even in court. So that's diversion. We currently have 119 juveniles on electronic monitoring, and I just thought I would give you a, oh. We also have 22 kids in the Allegheny County Jail, okay? And these were individuals who were under the age of 18 at the time of the criminal offense. And just, of those 22, six are charged with homicide, four are charged with robbery with a deadly weapon, and 12 are charged with aggravated assault with a deadly weapon. Now, when Schuman, when the next series of pods open, one of the pods is going to be Interest of Justice, and these kids would be housed at Schuman instead of in the Allegheny County Jail. But obviously, that pod is not open yet. Right now, as of 10/124, we had 12 children detained at Schuman. We had 11 more at Adelphi Manor Secure in Cambria County, three at George Junior Republic in Lawrence County, and one in Jefferson County, Ohio. So obviously, we need more beds in Schuman than we have, but that is being addressed. Probation officers, Juvenile has 88 probation officers, and there's also more delinquency programs set forth on page 34, which if you had questions about that, I would defer to Russ. We also have community-intensive supervision. That's for kids who are at home, but the program is designed for after-school until early evening, keeping these kids off the street. Okay. Orphans Court Division. Larry O'Toole is our AJ. Daniel Kuntz is our administrator. We have three judges in Orphans Court. They handle a multitude of cases, guardianships, estates, civil commitments, adoptions, that would be non-termination of parental right adoptions, like, you know, stepparent adoptions, that kind of adoption. Finally, our Magisterial District Courts. For the last fiscal year, at our Magisterial District Courts, we had filings of 194,795. So they handle a ton of cases. It's 46 offices scattered throughout this county, each with their own employees, and again, as I said, it's Pittsburgh Municipal Court, which is 24/7 open for business. I think that that concludes my summary. I tried to be brief. So, questions, please?
Yeah, we're going to try to prolong this as long as we can, because someone has plans on going to the game, so. That's what she usually does to us, so we're going to go all night long. Only teasing, only teasing. We'll go to the left this time. President Katina.
Nothing. Thank you, Judge. You do a great job, so.
Aw, thank you.
Proud to have you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to the game, but I don't have any questions here. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and you do a wonderful job. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I did owe my counsel.
Oh, my gosh. I mean, you guys can't let us off this easy.
We'll go that way. What type of percentage increase are the courts looking for in dollars from the county? Anything more than last year?
Well, I mean, we did not get everything that we asked for, okay? But we can live with the budget that the county executive came up with. We understand that it's tough times. We understand what you guys are looking at, and we will make do with the budget that we were, that was proposed.
Yeah, I apologize if it seemed like I was trying to, like, trick you. I honestly not.
No, no, no.
It was just, I was curious if you knew right off the top, like, what percent increase you're.
4.1% increase.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I wasn't, and then, this may get the prize tonight as being like the most stupid question asked, but it just shows that I really don't have experience or really any dealings with the court. So my understanding is that there'll be a number of retirements next year.
Judicial.
Judicial.
Yes, there's, I think, seven openings.
Are judges' salaries part of this budget?
No.
That's something different.
Judges' salaries, the judges' salaries are paid by the state.
As I said, it might, you know.
That's okay. Who would know that? I mean, but everybody else is paid by the county, except for the judges, and that's the Magisterial District judges also are paid by the state. Anything else?
I know. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Consulman DiMarco.
Thank you, Consulman Katina, or excuse me, Consulman Paul.
That's about the third time you called me that.
Listen, we're all, we're all Italian here, okay?
I've been called a lot worse.
Our names all end in a vowel, all right? So hey. No, thank you very much for coming tonight. You've already shared that you heard our concerns with everyone else. You've already committed to being able to work with whatever the budget is. I would just like to commend you for the pretty thorough presentation you presented, and thank you for coming before us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I have enough questions to make up for everybody else's.
You only get three.
I am going to the game, but I care so deeply about my job that I'm going to ask my questions anyways. Anyways, so I asked the same three questions, everyone. The first question, you kind of answered from another question, but I was wondering, what was the difference between what you guys originally requested in this proposed budget and what you ended up getting? You talked about what the increase is from last year, but do you know what that difference was between?
We requested a million, 100 million and 3, 269, 018. How about I can't read numbers?
No, you did great. And what are you proposing in this budget?
We received 97 million, 377, 035.
Thank you very much. So that's what, about $6 million less than what you originally requested? My next question is, again, we've been hearing from a lot of folks that there's a lot of waste in this proposed budget that we should cut. They're guessing $160 million worth of waste. So can you please tell me where in your proposed budget is waste that could easily be cut?
We don't think there's any waste. I mean, we really, we knew, okay, that this is a really financially horrendous time for our county, and we actually try and find ways to cut costs and be more efficient constantly, okay? For example, in our court IT department, or not IT, in our court administration in fiscal, we used to have, Chris, you, Chris, you have the facts better than I do.
Michelle is our fiscal director. And three or four years ago, she had seven people in her department, and now she has five people in her department. So what we've been doing since the pandemic is not just, oh, there's an open position, we'll fill it. We look at it and we say, okay, do we need that position? Can we cross-train? We also got a really good hire there, so that's, that's an example of what we've been doing across the board with Michelle. Kristy Donna Freo, who's there, she, so 12 years ago, we had 600 interpreter requests a year. Now we're up to 4,000, and so she's doing with that, that with two people. Really, she would need four people to do that, but we developed an in-house application rather than just. rather than just do it with phone calls and spreadsheets and emails. So if we hadn't done that, she'd be have four people that we would need. So that's a couple of examples of what we're doing, and that didn't cost us anything because we have very good in-house developers, so we don't end up spending an upfront cost and a yearly licensing fee for that kind of application.
Well, thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. And then, my third question is, if we gave you more money, what would you prioritize doing with more money?
We love the question. Everybody wants more money, right? I don't know anybody who would say, don't give me more money. But honestly, we recognize there isn't any more money. So like, hopefully, we recover as a county and we do better next year and we can ask for more money, but we're not-- everybody has to do their part. So I feel like it would be irresponsible to ask for more money.
Good answer. Okay, and then really quick questions that all shouldn't count at all because I think they're simple. You mentioned the Housing Court Help Desk, which I'm so excited about the actual physical thing that's being built. Do you have a timeline on when that's going to happen, when it's going to be ready?
There is a Help Desk.
Right, but the new one.
But the new one should be done early next year.
Oh, so soon?
Yes, 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 soon.
And then something that is like new to me that I'm just recently hearing issues with is, I wasn't aware that people who have PFAs filed against them aren't, you know, don't get some kind of legal representation. I mean, I know the public defenders are only four people facing jail time. I just never considered PFAs don't have something comparable. Is that something that we, like, are legally prohibited from providing? Or if the courts got more money, is that something the courts would potentially provide?
Well, I mean, we don't even, frankly, we're legally required to provide counsel for criminal defendants, for juvenile defendants, for the parents of the juvenile. Both parents of the juvenile are entitled to counsel. Now, over in Orphans Court, any incapacitated person, the Supreme Court just passed a rule that they must be represented by counsel. So those are requirements.
Right.
And we could all really, you know, it would be nice to be able to fulfill our requirements with more money before reaching out to something brand new.
Oh, absolutely. I just meant, say, we had unlimited money, which I know we do not. Is that something that in the future, after we get everything, I'll settle that?
Yes, sure.
We could try to do.
Yes.
I wish we had unlimited money. But, and then truly my last question. You talked about the walk-in reinstatement, which I have sent so many people to pretrial to deal with that, so I really do appreciate that program. I am trying to understand, like, is that for anybody that has any type of warrants or is it only certain warrants that people can do the walk-in reinstatement for?
Janice.
Yeah, so the walk-in reinstatement is for people that have either an active bench warrant for a fair trip here or an active arrest warrant for a non-violent case.
Okay, so like a probation warrant?
No, but we are currently in the process right now with probation in doing-- so that was pretrial's initial safe surrender program, which we now call walk-in reinstatement. And so this, we're in, probation is now looking at a safe surrender for probation violation warrants to get them dealt with. So we're just in the early stages of looking at that.
Cool. I love that so much. If there's anything I can do or we can do to support that, please let us know. And thank you, guys. It's really nice to see the President Judge here giving the budget presentation, so thank you.
Sitting on this side.
Sitting, well--
You can interrogate me.
Also, it's nice to not be sitting next to you right now, but really, it is nice to have the President Judge come and show up for the presentation. I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you very much, and thank you for ending on me. I am just gushing with pride, having been a member of that workforce. At one point, I spent a lot of years, and I want to thank everyone here, everyone for coming. And I know most of you. And what I also wanted to make sure that, what was not glossed over, because you did such an efficient job, Judge, and you are doing, the whole department is, but the, your assertion that essentially the opposite of addiction or problems is not abstention or punishment, it's connection. And it is quite clear, I think, to everyone up here that the courts of Allegheny County are leading the way in the connection concept for everyone involved. And I think while it's also, it's a warm and fuzzy, and not to be, to lower that--
But it is.
But it is a necessity, but I think there will be, at some point, we will be able to quantify in numbers the cost savings to Allegheny County with less jail. I love, Janice, thank you for, and Councilwoman Hallam, for pointing out that we're going to be working on the probation violation walk-ins. That, having worked as a probation gag on one hearing officer, that is huge because that also encompasses a ton of people. So I just want to keep pointing out, keep up the good work. These diversionary programs and the specialty courts, it is working. And at some point, like I said, I would love to see the numbers on what it is saving Allegheny County and the efficiencies that are built in to these also connection programs. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman. Councilman Grisbeck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Judge, for being here today. Only question I have is the same one that I've asked of everyone else. Obviously, I understand that this would be a very big ask, but based on our current budget situation, if you were forced to cut your current budget by 10%, what would that look like? What would be the material effect on the Court of Commonplace?
Honestly, it would be catastrophic. We'd have to cut a lot of personnel. 76% of our budget is personnel. And we have a high-volume business, and if we cut all those personnel, we're not going to have the resources, we're not going to have the staff to process and move cases, and it's going to create a huge backlog where, you know, people are not getting into court in a timely and efficient manner. So it really, it would be catastrophic.
Thank you very much for your answer, the great presentation, the great work you did. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Walton.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nekarei Chakas.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Judge, for a great presentation. I have three quick questions. The first one is, has there been any discussion with the county and with Adelfoy regarding opening up another pod at Schuman anytime soon and what that timeline might look like if there has been discussion?
Russ, can you answer that?
So the timeline right now stands at early 2026, so from the first quarter for pause two and three to open at Schuman under Adelfoy.
Thank you. My second question is, I understand that city council had voted to send legislation to the mayor to authorize the sale of the building that houses the municipal courts. Does that building, is there anything that happens in that building that would impact your budget? Should that sale go through?
I think it would impact a multitude of budgets, to be honest with you, because that is a hub for cases in the city of Pittsburgh. It's right next to the jail, so you don't have to transport people from the jail to the local magistrate's. All the city police are down here. They go over there for court. So it's going to cost them a lot more money. It's going to be a huge inconvenience to the public. And also, frankly, we would have to move all of our city operations back to the local magistrate's office in the city, which how many are there city magistrates? 13 city magistrates. And frankly, not all of them have holding cells, you know, for prisoners who are transported there. So that would be a really big expense for us. But it would also be, it would be a big expense for all the players.
The police.
The police. Oh, yeah, the police, the city, the city. Huge expense.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything, anybody? Okay.
Does she have any more questions?
And then my last question--
Yeah, good.
--is regarding Housing Court. And if you could just take into consideration some things that would be easily digestible that we can share with all of the councils in our district, the municipal councils in our district that we work with, where, you know, some municipalities have a very high level of renter, of tenant ownership or tenor residences. And so I think having that information available to pass along to the tenants will be extremely valuable. So thank you for all the work in Housing Court.
Thank you, and we will get you that information.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Your Honor, thank you very much for a great presentation and your staff in answering all the questions. I do want to say that it looks to me that when I see your budget and some of the changes you've made, that you're being very proactive instead of reactive. You're putting a lot of new programs in there that are helping expedite the process and helping people get, not to go to jail, but get them the help they need. So I think that's what we need. I mean, and we appreciate, obviously, you trying to keep the budget to where it needs to be, but like I told everybody else, it's our job to find the money to make sure that you have the resources and the personnel that you need. So great presentation, and it's wonderful to see everybody come. Councilman Hallam said it's good, you know, to see the President Judge here with her staff, and we appreciate everything you're doing down there. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you to all of you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing adjourned.